Call the meeting to order, all rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approval of the agenda, we have one addition, 7D Sock Lake Aquatic Vegetation Survey. Is there any other additions or changes?
Keith is here if you want to receive an update on Oak Street. I'm here, I'm finished.
Okay, can do that. Okay, we have an addition of in 8A, update on Oak Street. Do we have any other changes that need to be done? Not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two additions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the July 6, 2016 regular meeting. All receive them in your packet, is there any changes, corrections, clarification? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the July 6, 2016 minutes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Now is our time for our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Having no one here, is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings, but then takes us into our reports and presentations. Police Department Monthly Reports.
Mayor, Council, good evening. We had a busy June again, 790 total ICRs. Down 23 from May, but it's our busiest, uh, busiest June in about 10 years. Uh, some of the highlights from June, some of the busier stuff, we only had three alarms, which is a little bit down. Uh, 33 agency assists, most of those for Stearns County, a lot of those are when they come into town to do warrant arrests, we'll assist them with that, so that's what most of those agency assists are for. Uh, nine were for the State Patrol, more likely crashes and assisting on traffic stops. Forty-seven citizen contacts, most of those are the 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, we're just stopping and seeing what people are doing out at night, just saying hi. So we'll pull an ICR for that, just because we do detain them or talk to them for a period of time. Uh, felony drug arrests, uh, we had total five of those. Dog complaints are still a bit nine, you know, it seems like we're dealing with a lot of dog stuff, loose dogs, barking dogs, uh, people complaining about miscellaneous stuff. Two suicide threats calls, that's about average. Eighteen suspicious person calls, uh, thirteen thefts, three unwanted persons, twenty-five welfare checks, which is, seems a little bit high. Twelve drug paraphernalia and small amount of marijuana arrests. Again, we had 12 no gas, no pays, we're just getting hammered with those. Summertime, that's to be expected. Uh, fourteen matter of informations, uh, thirteen total for people driving without a license at all, uh, either being revoked or suspended. Four vehicle accidents, property, or property damage accidents, we didn't have any personal injury accidents in town. Three psych cases were, were up at the hospital, uh, assisting them with, uh, mental health type of calls. Um, and we also had three canine assists, all three of those were for the State Patrol, uh, within five miles of town to call in for assist for a vehicle sniff. Um, I did break down, uh, the first six months of our canine activity. So we've had sixty-three, sixty-four deployments with fines this year so far. Another 12 were, we deployed with no alert or no fines. Um, some of the higher numbers we're getting right now, uh, the methamphetamine. We, everything I break down into, the way we graph it is in grams. Um, so methamphetamine, we seized 901 grams of methamphetamine. Twenty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine grams of marijuana. Uh, 274 pieces of drug paraphernalia, be it pipes or scales or anything, anything that they can use for their, uh, drug use. Two point six grams of heroin, which doesn't seem like a lot, but a lot of the heroin stuff we're getting, we're dealing with heroin on a, almost a weekly basis now, but the problem is by the time they make it to Sock Center, uh, they're so addicted to it that it's already in their veins, and we're dealing with the aftermath. Either them crashing into stuff, coming into town, passing out, heroin's on the up, uh, we're going to be seeing a lot more heroin here in the next six months, it's exploding in this area. Uh, we've got 23 grams of hash oil, a hundred, about 110, uh, of prescription pills. Somebody doesn't learn to prescription pills, a lot of times they're mixing prescription pills with their, uh, other drugs they're using. Uh, so I broke it down into, uh, the street value of what we've taken out the streets. No, actually then we got, we've gotten eight guns off the streets as well, uh, resulting in the canine sniffs. So, so far for the, just the drugs themselves, uh, 335,742 dollars in, uh, drugs taken off the streets. Between the guns we've, guns we've seized, the cash we've seized for us and other agencies and vehicles, we're close to about $500,000 impact in the local drug trade. So it's, but, and summertime's a little bit slower for us because we're so busy with other calls, we don't do a lot of, do a lot of interdiction stuff. So the goal is to push for a million dollar, uh, impact by end of the year. So that's where we're at for the canine stuff. Any questions on the month of June or the?
I've got a question, it's not on the month, but it's kind of the drug talk. Is it Narco Sett, is that the, the heroin?
The Narcan?
Narcan.
Yeah.
Are we, are you carrying that?
Not yet, we're gonna start, I want to start pushing for it, because it's like it's, it's not very expensive and it's been saving a lot of lives, especially up in, like, the, uh, Moorhead Fargo here has been getting drilled with overdoses, uh, Fergus Falls as well. So that's something we're going to talk to the ambulance department about too, and see if we can maybe get on board with, in our med bags, because, I guess it doesn't hurt, uh, if someone's overdosing, and if it's methamphetamine, it's not heroin, yeah, we could prob, it doesn't hurt anything to give them that Narcan. So that's something we're going to look into, we've been talking about it, it's just figuring out as far as, uh, on what we can distribute. I know a lot of police departments are carrying their bag, most of the ones the police departments are using are the nasal stuff. They'll shoot it in your nose.
Police are being asked to do a lot of things nowadays, and we're very fortunate to have you guys, so.
Yeah, we've been getting a lot of support, a lot of, uh, people have been stopping at the police department, especially this last couple of weeks with everything going on, the media, uh, giving us support and stuff too, and we appreciate that.
Good. Thank you.
Good job.
Alright, thanks.
Any other questions? Planning Commission Report.
And so the Planning Commission met on Tuesday, July 12th, that was their regular meeting, they had a few items on their agenda. I did include a copy of the agenda in the packet. It has the June Monthly Building Report, and, uh, she had in there some of the comparisons to last year, and of course, last year we had some pretty big things happening in June with the Dairy Queen, Trillium, and the St. Paul's Church. Um, and you also have on page 14, you have, uh, the year-to-date of how much, uh, 5.6 million dollars of value has been added for this year so far, um, with the building permits. And another thing that they have, and that is an action item for you tonight, is they, uh, went through the request for proposals for the update of the comprehensive plan, and, uh, you have that in your packet, so we'll talk about that at that time. And, uh, the third thing is they did have to set a new date for the August meeting, because the August meeting falls on Primary Election Day. And so they're, I believe they set the new date for August 16th, which would be the night before the, that council meeting in mid-August. So the, the Planning Commission meeting has been delayed one week in the month of August due to, due to the primary election. So, does anybody have any questions on the Planning Commission?
Questions? Nope, I guess not. Airport Board Report.
Uh, the Airport Board met on Wednesday, July 13th, that was their regular meeting as well. They actually meet, uh, every other month instead of monthly. Uh, they did review and looked at the awarded bid for the Airport Improvement Project. Of course, the City Council has already awarded that, but they kind of looked at it in a little more detail, so they had a real good understanding. Uh, they did discuss, you know, how to use the airport while it's closed for construction, primarily for the FBO on-site, which is Central Plains, and in the fall, they have quite a bit of crop dusting that they do. Um, if the project comes in in the fall, it looks as, uh, with the FAA, that it may become a spring project, which is fine with us, because then we're not pushing it before the end of the year. Uh, so that was what we, uh, we're, we discussed. We have received kind of a verbal approval from, uh, Simon at the FAA, who is our representative in Minnesota. And he said, "We just don't have the written grant award yet." And so, because we're now in the second half of July, that kind of pushes our project into next year, so that is fine. And, uh, also, we're reviewing the preliminary development of a non-aviation use of hangars rental policy. In the past, we were not allowed to have any non-aviation use in the hangars, because the, all the concrete and everything outside of the hangars is considered taxiway, and you can't have vehicles and other things on your taxiway. And, uh, the FAA has, because many cities are like us, they may have some vacant hangars right now, and they are looking at adopting a policy at the FAA level that will allow us then to adopt a policy and perhaps have some, some non-aviation use of our vacant hangars. But as soon as someone wants it for aviation use, of course, they have to leave. And I can't say one way or the other for sure if that'll go forward, but, uh, if it is, in the future, you'll be looking at that. I think the FAA, um, their policy doesn't go into effect till like mid-2017. And we don't want to deviate from their rules, because our federal funding is, you know, it's kind of our encumbrances that we have by receiving federal funding as we abide by that rule, and we don't want to jeopardize that, so. But we'll keep you posted on that as we move forward. And that's all I have for the airport.
Questions, comments? Okay, moving on, we will then go to 7A, Approval of the 2016 Abatement Pay.
This is the one abatement contract that we have left outstanding, and that is with Dunham Express, and I believe I bring this to you two times a year. And this is their first half of 2016 payment for 227173. So total to date, they've received 27,6329, or that's five and a half years of a property tax return of the city share, uh, in exchange for them locating here. So, and looking for the abatement, approval of the abatement payment to Dunham Express for 227173.
Okay, questions, comments? This is usually one of them items that, you know, we have to regardless.
Yeah, we're under a contract.
We're under a contract.
We're under a contract.
So, do I have a motion to approve abatement payment to Dunham Express for $2,271.73?
So moved.
A motion by Keith, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approved Resolution 2016-55 authorizing ballot question.
Uh, this is at the last council meeting, the Finance Committee was directed to review and recommend whether we should look at that local option sales tax, uh, would, to be an option for, uh, the reconstruction scheduled in 2024 by MinDOT of Highway 71 from the freeway all the way through town. Uh, the city, of course, is liable for a percentage of the road and also for our infrastructure. Uh, the city's share of cost, uh, city engineers working on providing us with some better estimates of what that number of ours is going to be. Um, I did, uh, provide you in the packet the steps that we must go through, and I did talk to you about that before. And I do have a, um, a page in there that talks about, you know, different types of bonds that we could have, and how big of a project we could fund, so we kind of have an idea of what we could fund with the sales tax that could be generated. Um, the Fin, Finance Committee does recommend that we authorize it. They, um, looked at a 25-year, uh, possible 25-year term for the sales tax, and they would have like a cap of like a certain amount of dollars or a certain number of years passed, because in the ballot question, you do have to include that information. I don't know if Warren or Heidi, if you have anything additional to add, but what we were, um, I did in the resolution kind of detail it out, that it would be, uh, the question that would be on the ballot now would be, "Shall the city be authorized to impose a sales and use tax of one-half of 1% and a motor vehicle excise tax of $20 per vehicle for the revenues raised from such tax used solely to finance the city's share of costs for the restructure, reconstruction of Trunk Highway 71, and provide for the payment of debt service with respect to general obligation bonds issued to finance the improvements? An affirmative vote would impose the tax for a maximum of 25 years or until a total of $7 million is raised." So that would be the two things that would cut it off. And so that, I don't know if that kind of fits in line with what you two were suggesting. I mean, this is a draft that you can, you know, we can certainly change it if you want. So we have, you know, the resolution that we would need to pass to get it on the ballot, but we also want to make sure that everybody is okay with asking this question, if you think that's a good revenue source for the Trunk Highway. And of course, then it goes to the ballot, and then you actually have to have an ordinance imposing the tax. This is simply to authorize it to go on the ballot.
Questions, comments? The one reason why we looked at 25 years as far as a timeline was basically because numerous people that I talked to said about this sales tax thing don't sell ourselves short. So we end up...
Yeah, we don't want to get stuck short at the end.
You know, we're really getting stuck short and then end up having to pay the rest or do whatever, so that's the reason why the 25 years. The half a percent with that will cover this amount. Unless the figures come in from the state that's a lot higher than what we're expecting, and then we should have those numbers soon enough.
Yeah, and the Department of Revenue contacted me again yesterday, they want to update their numbers, because we have to give them all the, the four-digit code that follows your zip code, so your zip code plus four, and then those four numbers, because when they first, first gave us estimates, they were doing Sock Center, and then, but the plus four would do the actual city limits, so they can drill down to exactly which, you know, like Dairyland Supply, are you in or out, when they're trying to do their estimates. So, you know, the estimates could come in less or more than what we originally had, and of course, that all depends on sales too, what happens in the next, you know, we could get a business in here that has a lot of sales and it could go up, or we could have somebody go away and it could go down, so you have to keep that in mind.
And the $20 per vehicle excise tax, basically that, cars are not part of that half cent sales tax.
That is correct. And when you buy a car, you don't pay sales tax, you pay motor vehicle tax. And so motor vehicle tax is not sales tax, so that half a percent would not apply to cars. So the $20 motor vehicle excise tax would. So that is just, um, a way to kind of include that, that business or that segment of the business in this formula.
That's a bit high.
What, 20?
Yeah.
I think that's the most common, it's also the maximum, I think.
This is what, you know, if you, I, I checked with the other cities, and I looked at their resolutions, and I haven't seen anybody other than $20, they've all been the same.
Okay.
You know, you certainly can do it different if you choose, though, that's our...
I don't care, it's still a bit high.
Still a bit high.
Well, the one of the things that wasn't else mentioned to us, there's numerous counties that are starting to do this, that excise tax.
Uh, there's the county, there's some counties, and Stearns County is not one of them, that have been offered a transit sales and use tax.
Oh.
Separate from ours having a sales and use tax, they call it a transit sales and use tax, which is really the same thing, but it's a county authorization. So a lot of counties, and if you go down toward the metro, a lot of the counties already have that in there, but Stearns County does not.
Still harsh.
Yeah.
One of the things that the public needs to do is from now on, if, you know, this gets approved to go on the ballot, if you are going out of town buying stuff, take a closer look at your sales slips.
Oh, yeah.
Because you're definitely paying their sales tax.
Yeah.
Or, you know, to their improvements and stuff, and you may not notice it, or unless you actually look at it, but, and then this isn't, uh, while they're doing it, we're going to do it, but we got a way to, we have to have a way to pay for this project.
I don't, I don't think anyone in Sock Center wants to, uh, look at the final bill for the reconstruction of that road without somewhat of a plan and...
Yeah, that would only make sense.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2016-55 authorizing submission of question on ballot seeking voter approval of implementation of local option sales tax?
So moved.
We have a motion by Heidi, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Keith. Any other questions, comments? Call the question, all those in favor signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approve RFP for Comprehensive Plan Update.
Uh, the Planning Commission, at its meeting on July 12th, they voted to recommend to the City Council that it approve and submit the attached RFP, seeking proposals for firms or individuals to update the city's comprehensive plan. And, uh, I did rec, I did include a copy of the full RFP into your packet, and I believe Heidi, you were at the Planning Commission when they, when they voted to recommend it to move forward. I don't know if you have any additional questions about it or input into it, because the City Council, you can either, you know, approve this as submitted, you can offer input, and we can come back with those amendments to it. Um, it's definitely in your court. Otherwise, the Planning Commission is requesting that you approve this request for proposals for the comprehensive plan, for the RFP.
Questions, comments?
Long overdue.
It's, it's long overdue. I've always been one that went against the grain as far as doing a comprehensive plan, because I thought it was a lot of money for something that we use as a guideline in future councils and stuff, if they want to, can just leave it sit on the shelf. But it's something that we're required to have, and we need to update it. Part of the thing is, is I think we've got our comprehensive plan that we, we have now. My initial idea was basically to take that and tweak each part of that, rather than start out brand-new and try to save some money on it. Um, rather than spending a huge amount, re, basically reinventing the wheel. So that's one concern, the other concern I got is, uh, that one, with the number of meetings that they've got in here, participation process, you know, they've got six to eight Planning Commission meetings, well, Planning Commission only meets once a month, you're looking at eight months, and that doesn't even come close to the timeline that's listed as far as when we're going to have this completed.
I think it's a, I mean, we've been told it's going to take a year and a half or better, um, to get this worked out, but I, I don't think it's going to be every single time we meet. We're going to have subgroups that are meeting, that they would be, you know, our, the consultant would be there meeting at the subgroups in the meantime between, but I think they'd be there to, to guide us in the decision-making process along the way for those six to eight meetings.
I think that we got still too many meetings, because basically your review panel is going to have a Planning Commission person, a couple council people, and that on there, so I think we can eliminate some of the meetings.
Possibly saving us...
And possibly saving us money, because every time they walk through the door, it's going to be a...
The number of meetings was discussed at the, the Planning Commission. I don't, I don't think that one in particular, I think the EDA meetings were, were more looked at. I think it was just a question of the breakout, but it's something definitely we can...
We can work on.
Yeah.
So with that, I don't know if the council, or you, you want to put it off to the next meeting and have staff re-tweak this a little bit, as far as the meeting, or do you want to adopt it? Or how much, do you want to go into this? You know, do we want to just go and basically rewrite the one we got with the, you know, because these back pages that you have on this RFP are what we have in our existing one. And, I don't know, do we need to rewrite everything? Or should we have them just review what we got and rewrite?
I feel like once you get into it, you would be rewriting. This is 16 years old, and think of how, how much has changed, and this is planning for, you know, out to 2040. You know, what are cities going to look like? I think once you'd start getting into each of these individual items, we are going to be...
Basically starting over.
Basically starting over.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Vicki? Our, our last comprehensive plan was pretty much done in-house, wasn't it?
Uh, we hired a, we hired a firm, um, there was some parts of it that were done in-house, I believe you did the maps?
I did the maps.
Right, and then they had a lot of city staff involvement in it, and meetings like of, of the committees that were a city council, but we did have, um, David Rowan and Associates, I believe it was, actually, was the facilitator and, and led us through the process. So, it was kind of a combination. A lot of the legwork was done by staff.
Right. My main concern is just so we don't end up with this huge bill that, you know...
Well, you might, you know, the more, more complicated your RFP is, it kind of implies that you're looking for more, and then consultants may think that it might be a bigger project than maybe you're thinking it might be. You know, that could, you know, you kind of indicate by the complexity of your RFP, of what your expectations are, especially with the number of meetings. I mean, I know that consultants will look at, okay, you know, that many meetings, is each meeting is $1,000, or whatever, you know, you start adding them up. I don't know exactly how they're going to go forward, because they'll all have access to our existing comp plan to see how much work it's going to be. So we've linked all that, we've linked the website, we've linked the comp plan, we've linked all that to it, so they can see what their starting point is.
In your experience, and Dave, maybe you can come into, does this look like too many meetings?
Um, my gut feeling is that's a lot of meetings. We're not looking, I don't believe, for that much of a change. I mean, we have a plan, it'll be updated. I don't expect that we have a lot of contentious issues to hammer out on it. However, if you tell them there's going to be six to eight meetings, there'll be eight meetings.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think we could do it in half the number of meetings, basically, because you're going to have representatives of every group there anyway. But yet, you know, I don't want the Planning Commission to take offense that we changed something, since they were the ones that looked at this.
No, I think we all knew that...
There is so much that's changed, though, and there's probably so much that's going to change. I was just looking through some of these categories on the back here. I don't know what the answer is. I think it's impossible for staff to find the time to do it.
What, update the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Well, it, it takes a lot of public, it's, the, the thing that takes a lot of time is the public input. You know, you have to have public meetings to gather that input and facilitate those meetings, which you'll all be invited to attend. If you want, you know, we can look at that meeting schedule one more time and just make sure that's really what we're thinking, and then bring it back in two weeks if you want. Otherwise, we can, you can pass on it here with some amendments that you want to make right now, that's up to you.
It looks like something kind of fun to go through and just do, but...
You're welcome to join us.
I've jotted down some notes as we've been talking.
Yeah. So, what's council's wishes? You know, I can live with either way, and I'm only one vote. If you want to adopt it tonight, or if you want to have staff tweak the meetings a little bit and bring it back in two weeks, that's not totally going to upset the timeline, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
I think we've already upset the timeline on it, so, yeah.
Seems like two weeks isn't that big of a deal.
No.
I think I'd be happy letting it sit for two more weeks and let's try and maybe tweak a little bit.
Do you need a motion or consensus?
I think we can do a general consent, that we'll, uh, table this for two more weeks.
Yeah.
Okay? If that's alright with Vicki?
It's fine.
Okay, 7D Sock Lake Aquatic Vegetation Survey.
I, I did email out to you earlier and then provided you with hard copies this evening. We did receive the, um, annual work plan and budget, without the budget, because they're looking for some input of the aquatic vegetation survey. This is the new survey that was done for 2017. So now we're setting a budget and requesting a budget to be set aside at the Watershed District for the purposes of aquatic weed control on Sock Lake for 2017. You, you did, it's...
You, they did complete the survey, the first, second, and the third of June. They did find, CLP was found in 21% of the samples that they took, and whereas last year they found it in 30% of the samples. And they kind of sampled the same area. If you look at the map, all those little circles are all samples, and the ones that are colored in are where they found something. You'll see that they found 97.4 acres of the lake, which is identified as a possible treatment area, and there's 73.1 acres way up on the north end, there's 14.8 acres at the Narrows on the northeast side of the Narrows, and then nine and a half acres in the lower. So if you look at that whole schedule, you'll see that. The, there's two different tables in there. The one is, with a little bit lower numbers, is anything outside 150 feet from shore. If you recall, this funding is outside of the 150 feet from shore. I, you know, we sprayed 23 acres in 2016, although they'd identified like 133 acres possible, but 23 acres were sprayed in the end. And the rate per acre is actually $312, so I did a little table for you. You know, of 10%, 20%, 30%, how many acres it is, what the dollar amount would be, so you kind of have in your head how much that would, would entail. And then there's also the option, of course, of recommending no spraying in 2017 as well. But what we're doing tonight is setting a budget. We're setting a max. Then in the spring, when they apply for the permit, and then the DNR comes out and looks and says how much you can do, then they meet again and decide how much they're actually going to do. So really, what this meeting does is sets the budget, so the watershed can get it in the budget for next year. And then, so you're basically setting a cap of how much would be spent for spraying.
What was the cap that we set for last year? For, or, I mean...
Last year, when they submitted this, they had like $56,000 in there, but we ended up only doing 23 acres, so we ended up spending like, like $8,000, maybe $8,000. It was more to actually get the study done than we spent on spraying.
So basically, if we set to do the cap of, as if we were going to do everything at $30,388.
Right.
More than likely, the DNR is going to come in and say, "You're only going to do this much."
Well, actually, last year, the DNR basically said we could do everything. The year before, they cut us way back, so I'm not sure what caused their swing of opinion.
Mm-hmm.
And then we, but then you also have the, you know, we've received input from others as, "Don't spray at all. Give me the weeds, the fish are coming back." So you've got that as well. So you've got to try to balance that. You know, we don't want it to take over, but we don't want to kill all the weeds either, because they need the fish habitat. And the other, other option is the Big Sauk, the Lake Association, you know, they said if we get the operations committee together, and they would sit down and go into it in more detail with you if you wanted, between now and the next council meeting, and then the watershed, that our meeting is the third of August. And so they would allow us to make that determination at that time, if the committee wants to sit down and kind of discuss the details with the Big Sauk Lake Association. If you're comfortable setting a number now, set a number now, and we'll let them know. And if the Sauk Lake Association's not happy with that number, well, then they would have to come back and request a change.
Comments?
Well, last, last time, they sprayed navigation channels at the Narrows on the top end.
Correct.
And they really sprayed channels, I don't know, a couple hundred feet wide at most.
Correct.
As a navigation aid, that makes sense to me. I mean, we're not going to clear the lake anyway. I'm curious if that's their philosophy again this year, because I, I think it worked out well last year.
Well, and they did kind of spray the more dense areas, and there's two trains of thought, just keep the dense areas clear and leave the less alone, and the other thought is, all these little pieces all over, let's nip those in the bud, so they don't get bigger. So you've got your tool schools of thought there. You want to just nip all these little ones in the bud, so they don't take off on you, or you just want to concentrate on the channels? And that's kind of what the Lake Association goes back and forth on, is what's, what's the best approach?
Yeah. I, I'm curious what their thoughts are. Last year, you know, I expected them to be wanting to spray a lot, and they didn't spray that much.
Right.
Which I think is fine, you're not going to kill it. You can go after all them little ones, but it's a river.
I think part of it is they're looking at, they have a finite number of dollars, and when that's gone, that's gone.
Yep.
And I think they're trying to think of, what happens if we have an explosion in five years and we've expended the dollars? So they want to make sure that they're very conservative with spending those funds, so...
One of the concerns I have, too, is that they concentrate on our end of the lake, you know, we got certain spots, but we've also got a vested interest in a campground and, and everything else that uses that lake a lot now, and they've been able to, so...
Well, they haven't found very much on our end of the lake, though. That's, it's kind of hard to concentrate on it when there's not a lot there.
But that's where I'd probably be interested, and if we ended up with a little spot or something to take care of it before it got back to the way it was before.
Sure.
What's council's wishes? You want to approve a certain dollar amount tonight, or do you want to have the committee meet with their board, and we do that at the August 3rd meeting?
I think we should meet with their board.
Yeah, let's meet and find out what their thoughts are, too.
Get more on the same base?
Yep.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. General consensus on that, I think, same thing?
Yep.
Okay. Takes us to unfinished business, the update on Oak Street. Keith?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Project's going quite well. At this point, the, all the utilities are in. The curb, as you probably noticed, is all basically in at this stage, most of the gravel's in. Next week, there really won't be any more work this week. Next week, they'll be in doing all the sidewalk, driveway aprons, those kinds of things will be pretty much all next week. And the following week will be a couple days of finishing up the aggregate and doing the first lift to Blacktop, and there'll be restoration after that. So it's getting pretty close to being complete there. Just to point out, on Second Street, remember, we moved the road a little bit, so there's a little jog there. Apparently, there's already been a couple of comments, so if you receive them, remember, the, the point is that it's all set up for reconstruction of, of Second, so that it goes down the center of the right-of-way, so that's the reason for that. So there is a method to that madness, so. So things are going, I think, quite well. So if there's any comments, questions that you have?
Comments? Questions?
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you.
We have no new business. That then brings us to our consent agenda. We have our schedule of claims, unpaid claims of $60,613.70, paid claims of $1,500, for a total of $62,113.70. And we have our checks totaling $382,165.67. Is there any questions? Comments on our consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items. Vicki?
Just have two informational items this evening. Number one, this is a time of the year when we get our state demographer population update. They have estimated our population for 2015, because we're always a year behind, of 4,435. So, we're still short of that $5,000 mark. We're getting there slowly. And then also, I have the notice of candidate filing for council. Affidavits of candidacy may be filed beginning August 2nd and then through August 16th. And there's two terms up, it's David and Diane. Your terms are expiring, and so the two of you and anybody else that wishes to file